All right, we're gonna call to order the Glades County Board of County Commissioners's regular meeting for Tuesday, April eighth, two thousand twenty-five, at nine AM. We'll have the prayer by Commissioner Sapp and the pledge by Commissioner Barnes, and then after the pledge, if everybody would please remain standing, because I will have a moment of silence for the. Dear Heavenly Father, humbly we come before you again this morning, giving you thanks for another beautiful day, for all your blessings that you bestowed upon us. And Lord, I ask you to be with us as we conduct business today, that it would be pleasing in your mind and helpful to our community, help us, Lord, to make the right decisions. Thank you, Lord, for your son, Jesus Christ, who died for our sins, and forgive us where we fail you. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Let the leaded heads to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody please stand. Um, I don't know if y'all are aware, but last week, one of our employees had a heart attack while he was on duty, Mr. His name is Mr. Robert Power. Uh, he passed away, so we did just have a moment of silence for him. May he rest in peace, thank you. Welcome everybody here today, got a pretty short agenda. Uh, we have any amendments to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, we do have one. Uh, Glades County Corrections would like to have the board consider some amendments that are budgeted for Glades County's, uh, GCDCs. Make that, we could make that number five.
All right, so I guess the motion would be to amend the judgment to add number five as an adjustment to Glades County Sheriff's Department's budget.
Settle move.
All right. You got a motion by Commissioner, um, Patterson, second by Commissioner Sapp, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Pass this five votes, so that will be number five. All right, public input, anybody, non-agenda items, anyone wishing to provide public comment, please fill out a comment card on table at the entrance to the Commission Chambers. Please note, all comments on non-agenda items are limited to three minutes and/or the board's discretion. So we'll move right into public comment. First off, we have, um, Mr. Steve Dobbs, would you like?
Good morning. Uh, Steve Dobbs, ten sixty-two, Jay Twain, for the record. Um, come here wearing a little different hat this morning. Uh, I am working with the Glades County School Board on the middle school. Uh, I know you guys don't have the final say on the utilities, but you're a part of the board that has utilities, and I'm kinda asking for your, you know, direction, uh, which way we need to go. Uh, we've been working with, uh, the engineer, uh, Craig A. Smith, um, and they have created a, the, so the, the, the lift station in question is the one behind the wall fields, and that lift station basically handles everything south of twenty-seven, okay, including the school. So right now, it handles the middle school. We're relocating the middle school, so realistically, with the lower flow, we're not adding any capacity. But as we were going through this process, we, we got in touch with them and, you know, made a, uh, that, that we would participate in upgrading this lift station. But obviously, if that lift station fails, the school's in big trouble, as well as everybody else, south of, uh, twenty-seven. So, uh, and this is not a replacement of this lift station, it's just simply an upgrade, okay? Um, so the prices came back and it's half a million dollars, okay? And just for reference, um, I'm working on the Kentucky County High School, we put a brand-new lift station in, there was absolutely nothing there, cost two hundred and seventy about a thousand dollars. So, and, and I haven't gone through the plans to see what all is in there, what gold-plated, you know, circuits or anything like that, if there's any, I'm joking about that, I'm sure there's not. But, um, you know, we're coming here that, uh, you know, the Department of Education has advised us since, because we're trying to grab it. You know, we're not, we're not putting a lift station at our place, you know, so we're depending on this, and we're, we're more than, the school board is more than, I say we. But that's a habit I have when I, when I represent, I say the same thing when I represent Glades County, you know, I say we. But, you know, again, you know, we're, we're happy to participate, but, you know, we just feel like, the school board feels like half a million dollars is a little much for them, you know? I keep getting calls from Greg P. Orton saying, hey, we're down to one pump station, so I feel like you guys had to have a plan to replace this lift station. I don't know how you were gonna pay for it until we came along, but we're not sure that we need to be, the school board needs to be the one to pay the whole freight on this. Um, you know, we're happy to participate, so I'm kinda looking, do we need to come to one of your meetings, uh, you know, with the afternoon? I know that before this county commission meeting, you can make this request there, uh, so I'm just kinda looking for direction on, you know, how we need to handle this.
Carl, you wanna answer that?
Well, I think the first place to start would be the CCBWA meeting and provide the current information to them, so they can look at how they may be able to participate in funding this. Because for us to make that decision, you know, we're toying effort in that, I think it needs to come from, the discussion needs to be had, I think that means would be appropriate.
Have you discussed this with, with anybody from the, sort of?
We, we have had, they've had discussions with the, uh, is it the mayor, the one that's over the, you know? Um, and of course, he said that they weren't willing to, but again, you know, we need to, I think this is a board issue, in my opinion, not necessarily just a, a single person. Um, but, uh, I think we have some, uh, you know, again, they're not saying they don't wanna pay anything, they're just saying that, you know, look, we think that, you know, half a million dollars with, you know, a whole new lift station a couple of years ago, I know things have gone up, I don't know in the last couple of years, have things gone up that much. But, you know, now we're talking about half a million dollar, you know, upgrade to a lift station that serves the south half of twenty-seven more. So, but we'll, we'll take that under advisement, and I love it, you know, appreciate your time. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer anything. But again, I know, and we're, I'm here in public comment, I know you guys can't make any decisions whatsoever, and we knew that, and that's what we, we came here just to ask for direction and all this kinda stuff. And I think Mr. Carl always given us direction, and I appreciate that, so.
I appreciate you doing the head just.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you, thank you.
You'll see me again. All right, next we have Mr. Richard Sobel.
One Commissioner, Richard Sobel, two-two-three-zero, Silver Lake Run, New York, Florida, actually used. I just came here today to thank all of you. We had our honey festival the other day, we were very successful. I want to thank Commissioner Taylor, who sings the national anthem, Commissioner Stanley for pledge allegiance, and thank you all for attending it. It was a great success, I appreciate it pretty much. The other thing I have to say is that I'm very frustrated with the planning zoning. I keep watching planning zoning's agenda, I'm trying to find it online, and last night at six oh five PM, I pulled up the agenda, and it shows March eleventh, there's a meeting tonight, so we really have to get going on the ball, so that people like myself and other people in use can watch, because we know something coming up that'd be, the fact is dramatic, so that's what we're just in place. So again, thank you all, appreciate it, and look forward to seeing you next year, thank you.
Thank you. Yvonne Dahl.
I wanted to thank everybody that came to the honey festival.
What's your name and address?
Yvonne Dahl, ten sixty, Canterbury, seven thirty-one, use, we call it LaBelle. Um, thank you, Mr. Stanley, for setting up and breaking down at the festival, that was awesome, and the national anthem was wonderful. I appreciate everybody that stopped by our booth, and for those of you that didn't, um, we got another stack of, um, opposition signatures for the Bay Shore Mine, that's possibly coming up before you guys soon. I know that there were, um, a lot of people that had questions about that, so we did the best that we could. I don't know if you guys have received any letters from our community, we hope that you're reading them, seeing them, and we're hoping and praying that, um, you guys maybe come to me, so let's try to go around for a while, um, to see what we've built out there. And if you came to the honey festival, you surely saw it, because it was like twice as big as the Kangaroo Festival. And we had great music, Aiden Holt, he's an up-and-coming young artist who is, um, opening up for Diamond Rio at the ranch in Fort Myers. She's already scheduled to come back next year, and we've, um, got a whole other list of people on our email list to help us with the opposition of the mine, and I just wanted you guys to know that, to us, everybody keeps saying, don't worry about it, the commissioners are gonna take care of us. And a lot of you stopped by our booth, but some of you didn't, and we just have that feeling that we want, the gut feeling that we want is that you guys are on board with us, and if you need to talk to us about it, you're welcome. Come to our community association meetings, we do it with someone, we'd love to see you there, and thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other public comment? I think none, moving on to, hesitation in the ward is number one, apology from Buckhead Ridge youth.
Mr. Chairman, we had an incident out at Buckhead Ridge where we had some vandalism to one of our facilities, we had to close down. And I met with the youth and their, uh, guardians, and suggested they may wanna come to the Board of County Commissioners meeting and apologize to the residents of Glades County for what they did and what they've taken away, so with that, I'll turn to them.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying about Mr. Richard.
I want to apologize to the residents of the community, I want to apologize to the community, I want to apologize to the community, I want to apologize to the residents of the community. I am really sorry for spreading bad stuff at the park. I regret why I did, because it hurt the neighborhood, it was wrong. And I will never do it again, I hope you could all forgive me, I'm sorry, I don't know.
Sorry that we scraped into the bathroom, I learned to play twice for doing something.
We thank you for coming in and joining up, and hopefully, next time you come in here, it's, we're giving you an award or something. Yes, but, uh, we definitely, I, I know that we do crazy things when we're kids, but, um, I hope this did serve as a major lesson, that this could've been much more serious than what it was, but.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to handle it internally, and for parents to deal with the children, we appreciate that. Um, also, we're going to take them to school now, so thank you so much for allowing us to be here.
And also, since the restroom was nice panel for vision, how about the ceilings ended up chipping and falling off? When we get done with the.
Yes.
Hey, hold up a minute, Ken. Hey, Dr. Ken.
I'm sorry, she wants, she wants him to come back.
He wants his kids back, bring the kids back. But anyway, when will we get now, now that the bathroom's been such disarray for years, we've got them all messed and painted, when will the ceilings be done? That's, that's, that's my question, when can we put it on the agenda?
Well, I, I appreciate you coming in and bringing that to us, and I talked to Archie about that, I actually went out there and looked at that. So, um, these, they will, they depressurize, they gotta replace some of the wood and stuff in there, I don't know what the schedule is, but we do know about that.
Okay, so it will be addressed, and that's the view, all right, thank you. Mr. Sapp.
I would just like to say to your children, come up before this board, you have to be a little scared, a little embarrassed, and it takes a lot of self-fried to stand here and admit you did something wrong. But it makes us feel good, that y'all have the courage and the wherewithal to come in here and admit it, and we're very proud of you for coming for us.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I would like to say something too. Um, you kids, we all make mistakes, and, but it, it gives me hope, because you stood before us and you took accountability, accountability and responsibility, and that, we don't see much of that in this state in time, so y'all keep it up. It's a part of growing up, and you'll grow in character and integrity, and, uh, thank you for the apology, and you're forgiven, just, um, we know you're not gonna do it again, and if you see or hear of any other kids thinking about doing such as that, so tell them, that's a good idea.
Mr. Chairman, uh, owning, owning up to someone's mistakes is a, that's a life lesson, you're going to carry it a long time with you. So thank you for coming in, in front of everybody, I know it was a little off-putting being in front of people you didn't know, being in front of a bunch of adults, but y'all handled it very well.
Back to school. All right, moving on, we have no public hearings, uh, consent agenda is number two, county warrants.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I need to abstain from voting on all Taylor electric and AC items as I related.
I got that. Uh, would I have to say to that?
Uh, we need a motion for a summary.
You did, didn't you?
Uh, she just abstained from that.
Okay, all right, um, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve, county wants you to send it in.
All right, got a motion by Commissioner Sapp, second by Commissioner Barnes, to, uh, uproot the consent agenda with Commissioner Taylor abstaining from the items from Taylor Electric. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Uh, aye.
Close. Pass this five votes. All right, public input on agenda items, anyone wishing to provide public comment on agenda items, please fill out a comment card on table at the entrance to the Commission Chambers. Please note, all comments on agenda items are limited to three minutes and/or the board's discretion. This is agenda number three, is county tax deed application, Mrs. Jones.
Good morning, Mel Jones, Tax Collector for the record, excuse me. Once a year, I have to come before you, before we explain the tax deed applications. I know we have two new commissioners, so this will be probably the first time that you understand this, so I'm gonna give you a little history and background. Excuse me, when the current taxes are unpaid, um, in May, we have to advertise in the newspaper, and we sell certificates. It's like a lien against the property, it's an online sale, the people that are bidding are getting interest rates, they're not buying the property. It's still the landowner's property, the, uh, winner of the certificate pays the, the taxes, so that the county, the school, the water management district, all of the taxing authorities can get their money. Those that do not sell on the public auction, and like I say, they're not bidding on the property, they're only paying the taxes, they're acting like a bank, and in return, they're getting an interest. Eighteen percent is the highest, it goes to whoever bids the lowest, so we have had some go for zero. Those that do not sell at the certificate sale belong to the county, the county is left holding them, so that means nobody's getting any tax dollars out of that. They sit on the list of lands, excuse me, when they're two years old, April first is the beginning date of two years old. So the twenty-twenty-three certificates for non-payment of the twenty-twenty-two taxes are now mature enough for a tax deed application. Law says that if it is, the assessed value is over five thousand dollars, then you, the board, has to apply for a tax deed, you don't have an option. This year, we have none that are over five thousand, so you have to, you have to apply. We had twenty, at the time when I did the letter, we had twenty-three, twenty-three certificates that were mature enough, that you could if you wanted to. I sent letters out April first, I had one come in and pay, so we now have twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three certificates that are mature enough. But again, you do not have to. In the past, y'all chose not to if you didn't have to. If you do apply for the tax deed, you have to pay a hundred and fifteen-dollar title search fee on each one, then it goes through the clerk of circuit court's office if they're still not paid. They have a tax deed sale, if it still doesn't sell at the tax deed sale, then it goes on the list of lands, and it sits there for three years. At the end of three years, if nobody buys it from the, uh, list of lands, then it becomes the county's property, and you're responsible for mowing and all of that. So in the past, y'all chose not to apply unless the law said you had to. So my question for you today is, on the twenty-three, and then we have one, twenty-nineteen, that no one has purchased, um, still not paid. Um, but it, again, it is under the five thousand dollar threshold, so there's technically twenty-four certificates that you could apply if you wanted to. In the past, you chose not to, so my question is, what is the board's pleasure, do you wanna apply, or do you want to not apply? Now, the certificates are valid for seven years, so there's still time for the people to come in and pay, there's still time for people to come in and purchase, uh, the certi, excuse me, the certificates, and then they could apply, it's just the county wouldn't have to fork out the money and start the process. Any questions?
I don't, um, I can say we've done this over and over again, a lot of them aren't worth the property. I was looking at some of those last night, and some of these parcels are adjacent to other houses and properties, which I think would be of value to that person. So I think maybe in the future, we need to do some research and maybe notify these people that this property, rather than it just sitting in limbo, and we're not getting nothing for it.
Well, they still couldn't buy it unless the landowner agreed to sell it to them.
But they're sick, but if somebody came in and bought those tax certificates, right? Then when they go for tax sale.
Then they could, then they could start, if they held the certificate, they could start the tax deed proceedings.
Right.
But then it still goes at a public auction, so there's still not a guarantee that that neighbor is gonna get that piece of property, because he'll still go for a public auction, even if they get the certificate.
Like I say, a lot of these parcels aren't even big enough to build a house on, but I know two parcels are right in, this front yards of Buckhead Ridge, that are, they would love to have that, I'm caring too. They pay twenty thousand dollars for that piece of property to have it, but they don't.
And it's on our website that they can see that the taxes are unpaid, so I mean, it is covered by, you know.
By the way, if we keep going this way, it does, it's gonna stay in limbo forever, right?
No, eventually, I mean, we sell some, but eventually, once in a while, yes, they'll drop off. At the end of seven years, if they're not paid, then the taxes are barred from collection.
And it just, and it reverts back to the original owner?
It's always stays the original owner. The only way that it goes changes to somebody else's name, you know, through a tax deed sale, or a sale of the land, excuse me, a sale of the land for the landowner.
Excuse me, if I, if I buy a piece of property and I don't pay taxes on it, and it's, doesn't get paid for seven years, you're saying? I will still own the property even though I haven't paid the taxes on it, and I do whatever I see fit.
If, if no one applies for a tax deed, because the certificate will be sold each year that your taxes are unpaid, so that it's up to the certificate holder when they choose to apply. The earliest that they can apply is two years after the certificate is issued, but the life of a certificate is actually seven years.
And if somebody wanted to buy a certificate, now they'd have to wait till, uh, that time here, when you do that, or?
No, if they wanted to buy one of these, they can contact me, and they can buy it from the county, they can buy it from, through my office. But they're only buying the certificate, they're not buying the land, and then they would have to apply for a tax deed themselves.
Like I say, if one of these people wanted to get that piece of property and wanted to push it, get into a sale, that's how they could go about doing it.
Yes, and then, again, like I say, it would go to a public auction, and it would depend on, uh, the starting bid would be all the taxes that are due, that they have paid and everything, and the interest, and that would become the starting bid, and it would go to whoever bids the highest dollar amount, and that's what the clerk's office does.
Well, I, I agree with you for this year, I think we should just pass and let it go, but I think in the future, we need to research each one of these little lots and see what value it might be to somebody out there, but if we took on, we could, if we went and did this process and took it over, could we sell on the next day?
They're, they're not the county's property.
So it really doesn't.
So if you apply for the tax deed, then once the title search is done and everything, then it would be turned, if it's still not paid, it would turn, be turned over to the clerk's office, and then it would be a public auction. Only if it went to the public auction and no one bid on it, then it would go on the list of lands, and at the end of three years, then it would become the county's, if nobody come in and paid after three years.
Thank you for explaining. I accept the motion, unless y'all want some more.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, just real quick, maybe kind of on another subject, I know you don't go look at all these properties that are, are these, uh, some of them aren't big enough, I heard, and, and I don't recognize where they are, but some of them aren't big enough for, to build a home, but are these, are they basically abandoned? Are they grown up, or are they a nice sort to the neighborhood?
I have several of them around Washington Park there, but, um.
I have no idea.
Just looking from the decks, from the aerial, looks like somebody's maintained it, but it's probably the next door neighbor's probably just gonna keep it.
I know, I was looking, uh, last night, the film was shared, and there's a lot of them in use as well, so.
The ones in use are looking like they're out in the small, yeah.
And Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of County Commissioners not apply on the twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three certificates that are mature enough.
Set. All right, got a motion by Commissioner Sapp, second by Mr. Patterson, is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Pass this five votes. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have to explain that to me every year. One day I'll do it. All right, number four, Go Rail Letter of Support to the House Subcommittee on Transportation and Senate Transportation Committee.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this was a request to have the chairman sign and au, and authorize the use of the county's name in promoting, uh, rail freight and transportation initiative, to try to promote rail. In order for the county to be able to sign that, we need, uh, the commission to authorize the chair to, to sign that letter. I think if, you know, our goal would try to, is to try to not put, say, trucks on the road, and this rail initiative would help, help prevent some of that. Maybe one day we could get rail to come up twenty-seven out of the board, and it would help work on some of our development issues here in the county. We'd ask the, the board to consider authorizing the chair to sign the Go Rail Letter, allowing him to use our, uh, support for Go Rail and, and transportation issues regarding rail and freight.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the BOCC authorize the chair to sign the letter of support for a future rail investment, and allow this to be presented by Go Rail on our behalf to the House Subcommittee on Transportation and the Senate Transportation Committee.
Set. Got a motion by Commissioner Patterson, second by Commissioner Barnes, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Pass this five votes. Number five, Glades County Sheriff's Department. I think we're from the correctional question.
Mr. Chairman, uh, as you are aware, uh, this Glades Correctional Institution has received, started receiving ice of April first, uh, ICE detainees, and their funding won't, they won't get funding from ICE until, uh, May and June. And the request from the Sheriff's Department is to utilize part of their current budget to help fund the startup of ICE. Commissioner, uh, Commissioners, uh, Ms. Shelley, uh, Rizville, and, and the sheriff here, if you have any particular questions regarding this item.
Mr. Chair, it, it wouldn't violate any statute or anything like that, would it?
No, but this, this doesn't violate any statutes or anything, this is the county correction, the Glades Sheriff's Corrections Budget, rather than, uh, try to find a way to loan money to the GCDC, this, we're gonna use part of their current, uh, budget that's approved by you to offset some of the costs for startup for GCDC, and any funds that are not used gets returned back to the Board of County Commissioners.
And then when I start throwing in, it replenishes that, huh?
It doesn't pay us back, we won't get reimbursed for it. We won't get reimbursed for it. But that will just help offset some of those, the startup costs for hiring the new employees and things they need to do for them. So this is basically an assist to get them, get them started. But we won't be reimbursed by ICE. So, is that correct?
That's right.
If I, if I understand this correctly, once G C D, or once ICE, or G C D C gets up and rolling, then we will be paying a per diem out there for the inmates that were taken. So right now, we're not going to be paying that per diem until this is, we'll pay this for two months, then we pay the per diem, is that?
The plan is to pay the per diem April and in June, but any. The plan is to pay the per diem for April and in June, but any money that, that we have left over and there's expenditures that G C D C needs help with, mainly payroll, utilities, what have you, we're going to use that additional funding to help offset those costs for G C D C. You will also not be paying the lease payment that you have there pending for office space, so.
When does that, when is that going to stop the lease payment?
It should stop March the thirty-first. That is something that we haven't gotten to yet, but that should be in.
If we had talked about it, it's going to get canceled on March thirty-first.
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I need to approve the request for the Glades County Sheriff's Office to assist G C D C startup.
Right.
All right, much, my Commissioner Taylor, second, my Commissioner Sapp. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, that's our, change the constitutional officers, Sheriff, you want some?
Well, I'd just like to say that we are back in the act business and we appreciate all the assistance from the county and my team. My team's done a miserable amount of work to get this done. And we're back, April first, we started getting our first shipments. We've had several since then. Some have been taken away, their flights are ready and they're flying back home wherever their country is. So we appreciate everything and look forward to looking to brighter days.
How many do you have out there now?
I'm sorry, Captain, ninety, something like that.
Yeah, we just stopped, yeah, we just stopped thirty, thirty in this morning.
But you've already picked some in and they shipped them out already?
Yeah, some have already left.
Wow.
So that's the way it's supposed to work, yes, ma'am?
What countries?
Well, that depends on where they're from.
Well, right, but you don't know where they're from.
Yeah, well.
You don't know what countries they're going to.
No, it's not.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other question?
Any questions?
Appreciate it.
Do I have any other constitutional officers down here? Oh, he's out. County attorney.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we, I continue to work on some prospective development projects that are up there. So there's still talk about other things. And, well, I and I are working, trying to resolve some other issues that we may talk about later, but not for now.
Anything for the county attorney? County manager.
A couple of things to get you caught up on, some projects and some stuff that's going on. But first, I'd like to thank Representative Tuck and Senator Grau for their great letter for our support of our Indian Prairie program. We did get that off, about three point seven million, as you know. So hopefully, we can score some, score highly on that. But I wanted to personally thank you all for making that happen. I really appreciate it. I received an email from the city manager for Moore Haven about our fireworks and with the cost of stuff going up, asked that we, I think we were spending five thousand. Perhaps we would add another thousand to that, I think, is a long file request. And I think I'm going to go ahead and approve that, but letting you know that that was a request. Otherwise, the show wouldn't be as dramatic as it, as it could be in the celebration. And seven twenty-one, the pre-construction meeting for that road is on April fifteenth. And seventy-four, had a great discussion with D O T. As many of you are aware, I did, I had some concerns over the design of that construction project. Ajax is willing to look at the full depth reclamation where we can get more of that road done and have a better product. D O T is accepting, is, is going to, they did it in Highlands County, so they're receptive to allowing us to change that mix design just internally without having to go through a new bid process. So hopefully, we will get more work done, better work done and for the money that we're putting into that roadway. So that was something I was really, really working hard to try to get, get done. The Doyle Connor Building's going well. It's supposed to be done by the end of the month before the May third event. One of the things that the Glades Livestock requested from Wright was to replace the metal on the north side and the west side of that. It was twenty-seven thousand dollars. They want, they're going to do a pass through, we'll pay and they'll pay us back, so. But that is, that's something they requested. The other request that they've asked for is the foyer in the restrooms where they tore the old, old partitions out and just, just hold them in four wheel partition doors. So looking to try to do something in on those floors and right construction is going to give us a floor on that. But again, the pass through for the twenty-seven thousand for the wall replacement and sealing of the concrete is something that the Glades Livestock, Mike and, and Miss Drager, so they want that. That's all I have, I think.
Anything for county manager?
Um, Susan, yes, it's, I just missed Susan DeShawn in here, so I will mention it to you. I know several months ago, before you came on with this, there was an agreement made to provide a, I believe it was weekly updates for Lakefront Estates. And I don't know that there's been one lately. Is there any updates on Lakefront Estates from Ben Smith and Morse de Pue?
So, Mr. Pringle alluded to, we've been discussing this with Lakefront Estates. I've discussed it with Susan and with Mr. Pringle. There's a couple items that we need to do. The O P C needs to be approved by Morse de Pue so that they can get their bond. And then Mr. Pringle and I need to talk about how we look at the development order, the development agreement and the, and also the P D ordinance and how we can break that project up into smaller sections so that they can get their project into a scope and size that they can manage through different phases. So that's where we are today. So we're, they're waiting on the numbers so they can get the barn and we're moving on, moving that forward. But it is creating some challenges for them as well, so.
Let's see, Susan just, just hold the phone. Thank you.
And there, Mr. Chairman, just to add, remember in what Mr. Carlisle was primarily referring to is the fact that the phases that were originally requested by the developer and approved by the county were, were larger phases. And now there is an interest in light of the development cost of the phases that were approved and being so large. There's an interest on the developer's part to have sub-phases recognized by the county. And so we are working, cooperating with the developer to try to create the mechanism for the sub-phases to be recognized and, and dealt with at a sub-phase level so they're not having to develop an entire, and construct infrastructure for an entire phase at the beginning of, of the phase of development. So we're still working with them.
Thank you. I know we're rolling along the dais, so.
Still are.
Certainly, okay.
Still are, definitely. Different people have different opinions.
Yes.
That's right, still are.
Okay.
Anything else for the county manager? We've got one of the department heads, Archie Jankin.
No, sure.
Except my recycle bin.
It'd be back when?
I don't know if, I don't know what you're going to do, but I get at least three phone calls a week on where is it at, where is that bit out? And if, if we can't keep it there seven days a week, maybe I can schedule where it's there three days a week or something. So at least they know it's going to be there, but I guess if people are, they get mad at me, they drive up there and unload all their stuff and then it's not there. But I know I talked to Mr. Carlisle a little bit about maybe moving it somewhere else to get it out of the headlights. But anyway, big complaint there. Who else we got for department heads in here? Mr. DeShawn?
Yes. Morning. Mr. Carlisle had made me aware of the Heritage Festival that is coming up this weekend at.
Bassinger.
Bassinger's in Highlands County on ninety-eight and the Sandy Road. And it's a celebration of, or recognizing that several counties split into these five different counties. And so each county has to have its own booth. So yesterday I gave up some ideas and it will be open this weekend for Saturday and Sunday. You can have historic items there. You don't have to have historic items, because I called and talked to the woman in charge of the festival. She said you can bring items in to show what you're doing now or something that reflects who you are. And Highlands County was at their booth going to give the information in the bills or the legislation or whatever occurred that allowed several counties to split in five. And she says there's no reason to repeat that at every table. So I was going to take items that, some of the items like we do with the T V C, not the R B parks, but I found other pictures and things that I want to get framed and something to put on an easel, one of the maps we have at Glades County and I'll, I'll show it to you later.
Good job there. Sure is that.
Thank you.
Anyone?
Nothing.
Um. Yes, you do. Um, we got your orb.
Nothing to bag.
All right.
Halfway through session. Getting there.
Well, I wanted, I wanted y'all to know that our department heads, it seems like we're always complaining to you all the time. We appreciate everything that you guys do out there and all your departments and everything. It's not that we're here to scream and holler at you, but it's just like, this is our chance to tell you what we're getting on the other end of the line. But I, I know it gets bad because every time I, it seems like I call one of you guys, it's, I'm complaining about something. But it's not that, it doesn't mean that we don't appreciate everything you do and how you do it. It's just that we're trying to get people off our, our list. Um, Commissioner's items, Commissioner Sapp.
Well, first I would like to congratulate the Muse Association. Muse has come a long way since I lived there when I was a little boy. And whenever I drive up and see cars lined up on both sides of the road for a quarter of a mile and the place is full of people and there's booths everywhere you look, it says a lot. And that's one of the finest festivals I've been to this year and my wife really loved it. Now, Mr. Vaughn, you're kind of going to us for not stopping by your booth.
Yes, I, yes, I was.
Stopped at every booth except yours then to buy stuff.
I know.
But anyway, it was great and I'm really glad you attended. I'm sorry I was late, but I cannot control that.
Mr. Stanley filled in for you.
Pardon?
Mr. Stanley filled in for you.
He did, he did an excellent job. But it's just amazing to see how this community has grown, the support that y'all have from everybody. It was great. Glad I could be a part of it, although I was late. And the Tobacco Free Coalition that I belong to, we have signs made up that will be no smoking, put it all in parks. And Archie is going to have his crew do that. That's a great thing. And I had the honor of touring the Glades County Sheriff's Building the other day. And when I was a deputy and worked for the Seminole Tribe of Florida, I had a few times I would bring prisoner or detainees into there. And I never had the opportunity to go over that whole facility, but I was truly impressed. And got to meet the director of the ICE program. He's for the United States and the little fellow is on the ball. But the sheriff and Chief Deputy Podorf took us on a tour. And it's, it's, there's no reason for us, anyone, to get a complaint about that facility not treating their, the inmates properly because they covered everything. And, and someone had asked Mr. Podorf a question and he had the answer. They have the law library, they have the barber shop, they have a dentist, you know. I mean, it's, it's perfect. There's no, nothing wrong with that facility. And I was really glad to go through that. I never realized just how big that building was, is. But it was, it was really a, a good experience for me and I'm glad to see y'all here this morning. That's a great thing. And I think that's all I have.
Mr. Taylor.
I had anything? Or just like to say it was a very enjoyable, enjoyable day in Muse and thank you for having me. Sing the National Anthem, that's always an honor for me. And it was a good day, it was a good day. Proud of the community and it was nice, it was nice. And thank you all for being here.
Yes.
Whoever won you?
Barnes?
I don't have a whole lot, sir. I, the Ortona area, they have a new mail carrier, contract carrier, and they're having issues with them. I think we've had two deliveries in the last week. They're refusing to deliver the loose mail. They'll deliver packages only. Called with the, Mr. Carlisle, I've also called with the postal service. They have it in action, they're getting it flipped out, it's just taking time. Trying to get out of one contract and hire some people. Had plenty of phone calls. I've had people just show up at the house to visit and talk about the mail. We're working through it.
I can't see how these people are, I know they're not paying that lightly, but if something like that happened in Buckhead Ridge, I would never hear the end of the day. I mean, if their mail didn't come, they would be extremely, because I mean, they're used to having it delivered to their house, but, but it's, it's kind of, you always think, man, it's leaders, right? The mail's coming.
They're delivering packages, just the loose mail. And the packages they deliver, they, they got a good arm because they're getting thirty, forty feet up in the yard.
What else?
That's all I have.
Mr. Sapp? Uh, don't really have a whole lot. I was able to ride out in Muse, spend a little bit of time out there. Beautiful festival that, like Commissioner Sapp said, I, I think it gets better every year. Y'all put a whole lot of work into that and should be proud of it. After that, I, I did leave and I went to the celebration live for Mr. Powers and it was a great lost art community, not only was he a great employee, but, but you could tell by the turnout there that he touched a lot of lives. And we need to continue to keep his family and friends in our prayers and that's all I have. I don't have a whole lot on Lakeport community. We'll have their meeting tonight at six o'clock if anybody would like to attend Muse. I think you're having one Thursday night. What time does it start? Six?
Six thirty.
Six thirty?
Yes.
Um, I just, I don't have a whole lot. Appreciate everything that everybody does and like the, it's, the death of one of our employees is a very serious matter. It's like, I, I'm very proud of the guys that were out there that tried to, or did help. I guess they did help getting to where he did, but unfortunately, he didn't make it. But you never know. you never know, so, every day you wake up, you never know if you're gonna go back to sleep in your pillow or not. Other than that, if we have anything else, anybody have any comments to make before we close? Yes, sir, come up to a point.
Um, just wanna make a quick comment, because I happened to be out in Tallahassee when I saw Rural County Day, um, and I know that the commissioners get paid a lot of money, but it happened to be, I didn't, it didn't, I, I had to mention it publicly, especially, I know Commissioner Sapp wasn't here, and there's not many people in the public, but I was very impressed. Uh, if I would've been working for the county in that rain and wind came, I would've ran for the hills, and watching the commissioner and, uh, Paul and Sue, everybody standing all down that tent, I felt very proud of being a part of Glades County, so I wanted to mention to the public, so thank you.
Thank you.
We look like John the Red.
You guys didn't give up, you're like, you're gonna go flying up with the tent, you're gonna like, oh.
Say, next year, we're gonna hand out raincoats that say Glades County.
Well, I think it's important people in the county know about, 'cause those are the things they don't see.
Well, I can tell you, when I was holding on to that pole, I said, I wish I could be anywhere right here. But I knew if I let it go, we would've never found our tent again. Anyway, anybody else have anything else before we close?
Yeah, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, just my condolences to, uh, Mr. Robert Tyler's family and friends, um, I didn't get to, to come, I wore myself out in Mews, uh, and, but I just wanted to offer sympathies and prayers for the family, and I'm very proud of those who helped too. Uh, my husband spoke to one of them, I didn't know Mr. Robert, but my husband did, and he said he cooked him a plenty of steak down there at the, um, at the Eagles, and so I ate some of the steak, I know that, but, so I know he will, he'll, he'll be missed in the community, so just prayers for his family and friends.
One last chance. Yes, ma'am, come on.
Well, I just was wondering if they'll be doing a fundraiser for them?
I don't know, so you know anything about?
But you'll keep us updated if you do?
Yes.
Okay.
One more time. As our business is done, we are adjourned at nine fifty-one A M. Thank you guys for coming out.